I get that, bud.
I know.
And we are live now, now that you.
Now that I'm on. Great. All right, I will call to order the Cumberland Town Council meeting for Monday, October 24th, 2022. Prior to the night's council meeting, the council did have a workshop with our police chief and Officer Amy Owens to talk about ALIS, which is a kind of emergency training that is being rolled out within the school district, which Officer Owens was a huge part of, and we will hear more about that momentarily, as well as get an update on some, the body cam investment that we made over the summer from, from the police chief. So thank them both for coming a little early this evening. First order of business is approval of a minute for our October 10th, 2022, meeting.
I would move to accept the minutes as presented.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
One abstention.
Oh, thank you. And next we will move to our manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to defer my time to our police chief, Chief Rumsey, if, Chip.
Thank you, sir, counselors. Good to see you again. Appreciate it spending the time with you during the workshop tonight. So it's going to be a little bit of the Officer Amy Owens show for, for the first part of the, the meeting, but as we, as we open, as you mentioned, Madam Chair, we discussed during the workshop, the ALIS Emergency Response Program that's being rolled out to the schools. And so I'd like to take the first couple of minutes to present an award to Officer Owens, who was really so instrumental in getting this program off the ground and up and running. And I know now, since I put this letter together and, and let her know that she was receiving the award, the work that she's been doing with the school to help develop curriculum for the students and help start to roll this out to the students has continued. So this letter could have been a lot longer if I had held off for a little bit, but I was so excited about it that I maybe jumped the gun and wrote it a little bit early. So Amy, would you come join me, please? I know you like to be the center of attention and be talked about. So this is, this is what's called a chief's award. So we have a number of different awards that we can give at the police department and the other members of the department that were instrumental in rolling this program out that were certified as instructors and helped out. I also provided them or presented them with a letter of commendation. This is another sort of higher award because of the really above and beyond effort that Amy went through. So I'm just going to read this to you all, and then I'll present Amy with a certificate, and we'll go from there. This says, "The chief's award is presented by the Cumberland Chief of Police to employees who exemplify the highest standards of service to the community by virtue of their diligence, dedication, and character. This award may be also granted to employees who develop new innovative programs which clearly enhance the mission of the department or improve the quality of life for the citizens of Cumberland. It's my pleasure to recognize you, Amy, with the chief's award for your impressive efforts to prepare, organize, and execute a plan to train nearly 450 faculty and staff of MSAD-51 in the concepts of ALIS over a three-day period in August. You accomplished this plan with very little oversight and while displaying a high degree of competence. In preparation for the rollout of ALIS, an active shooter response training program, you worked with the district's leadership and safety committee to build support and buy-in for the program. You also presented the proposal for ALIS to the school board and received their support. Further, you engaged with district leadership to carve out valuable staff time for the training and planned an aggressive schedule so that six ALIS instructors from the law enforcement profession could partner with trained district staff to deliver the training. This was a logistical feat and a commendable endeavor. On August 26th, you worked with Sergeant Mike Pierce of Yarmouth PD to deliver an overview of ALIS to assembled faculty and staff. There were hundreds of people in attendance and many more watching remotely. You were engaging, confident, professional, and in full command of the information you presented. Following the assembly, your team of instructors broke up to begin training groups of 15 to 18 staff in a two-hour block of scenarios to build on their general knowledge of ALIS. By all accounts, those who attended the training found it to be empowering, confidence-building, and extremely worthwhile. During scenario training, you and your team demonstrated the futility of traditional lockdowns in response to an active assailant and subsequently moved students, through the, students being faculty and staff, through the concepts of enhanced lockdowns, evacuation, and counter of an active assailant. The delivery of the serious material and the handling of a myriad of questions required a firm command of the coursework. Each officer instilled confidence in district employees to make swift decisions under pressure with minimal information to assist their students in a critical incident. In addition to delivering vital information to enhance the safety of every adult and child on the MSAD-51 campus, each officer partnered with ALIS-certified instructors from among the ranks of school faculty and staff. This pairing added a level of credibility and collaboration to the training, which enhanced the experience for all those involved. It is my belief that the school employees who spent time interacting with each officer on the team came away with a newfound respect for the dedication, professionalism, and preparedness of our staff to respond to and mitigate any critical incident on campus. I firmly believe that the concepts taught in ALIS and actualized by scenario training over the past few days will make MSAD-51 a safer campus. This accomplishment would not have been possible without you bringing your impressive organizational talents and enthusiasm to bear. I am proud of you and know that you are well-deserving of this award. Congratulations." Here you are. Congratulations and well-deserved. Thank you for that. And so, Mr. Manager, with your permission, we'll continue on. And so we wanted to spend the next couple of minutes talking about the school resource officer position in the MSAD-51 school district, just for those folks that may not understand exactly what Amy does on the day-to-day, may know that she's there, appreciate the work that she does, but there's a lot more to it than that. And so we'll try to take as little of your time as possible, but, but cover a lot of ground in a short period of time to talk about what Amy actually does on the MSAD-51 campus. So Amy, would you start off by taking just a couple of minutes? Again, nobody likes talking about themselves, but can you give the council a little bit of an overview of your education, your training that's kind of prepared you to be successful in this role?
Thank you very much for everyone's time. I'm humbled and grateful to be here. Not so much to talk about myself, but just to give you some background on me, I started my law enforcement career back in 2006. I worked for Portland PD for about five years. And then I had an incredible opportunity to go to New Zealand and teach environmental education with the Department of Conservation. So that sparked this opportunity to travel and teach. I ultimately came back to Maine, where my family is, and took a job with Yarmouth PD and worked as a patrol officer for Yarmouth for a while before coming to Cumberland and getting into the SRO gig. So what I love about being an SRO is that it really allows me to blend these two seemingly separate passions of working with kids and law enforcement. And building those relationships with kids in this role is, is the heart of, of what I do. So that's been some of my work experience, my academic experience. I earned my bachelor's degree out in Wyoming in criminal justice and environment, environmental education. And then I am currently working on my master's in social work. I think that's a really important tool to have for when working in a school system and student support services. I also have been able to attend several SRO-related trainings. NASRO, which is the national standard for SROs, is a 40-hour program. I completed that. I completed another program with the Maine Criminal Justice Academy for SROs. I'm crisis intervention-trained and recently got my EMT as well. Thank you for your time.
We're gonna, we're gonna bounce back and forth a little bit. Before I turn it back over to Amy, I think it's important to remember as, as she talks about her daily responsibilities on campus that Amy is a police officer that's in the school. So it's maybe for a lot of her day, easiest to think of her just like our other police officers, but her patrol area is the school campus. So the buildings of the school, the, the roads that run through it, the sidewalks, the, the athletic fields, the playgrounds. Our relationship with the school by way of the SRO is defined by an MOU that we have that's currently under review, just because it's a couple of years old, so we're taking a look at it to see if any of the language needs to be updated. And so although Amy spends all of her time in the school district while school is in session, she is an employee of the police department. She's supervised by police supervisory personnel, and we collaborate with the school on individual incidents that may arise if there's an intersection between education and, and law enforcement. So just a little bit of background, I'll let Amy talk a little bit more about like what her day actually looks like. And I'm just gonna leave that there.
Thank you. All right, so I just want to say briefly, I remember when I was interested years ago in an SRO position, and I asked some friends who have that role in other communities what their days looked like, and I felt like I could never get a straight answer. And what I've learned is that the reason for that is that every day is different, and I love that diversity. So it is hard to quantify what a typical day looks like because there, there aren't really a lot of typical days. But I will try to go through and tell you about some of the things that I feel like are important about what I do on a, on a regular basis. The first part of my day is greeting students and families who are arriving to school and being a visible presence on school campus. So that is really from 7:45 in the morning when I start until nine o'clock in the morning when MIW students are safely in the building. It's both patrolling in a cruiser around the campus, and it's also being out and welcoming kids to the school. So that familiarity and that relationship building goes on through the day. So if there is an assembly going on that day, if there's an event going on at the schools, that's where I plan to be, and that's for every, every building. It's important for me to, to show my face and to be a visible presence for everyone in the school community. Also patrolling the exterior and interior of the buildings, looking for prop doors and safety concerns that I can address. And then also giving attention to areas of campus and students that might need extra attention. So checking in with students that I'm familiar with, that I have a relationship with, or that I know need that support. I can do that from either the office, or once in a while I'll email with students and, and meet them in, in various buildings as well. And building that rapport with students is really important to me and to this role because that communication, it fosters trust, and it fosters an opportunity for students to feel comfortable coming to me to let me know about other safety concerns as well. It's not only a support for those individuals, but it's also helps, helps facilitate school safety. The other, one other big piece of that is consulting with the building administrators on student issues that have a nexus to school safety so that they can come to me with any type of report, whether it's an emergent report, like a threat, or a 911 hangup, or vandalism going on, or a student who they're concerned about abusing and neglect in the home, or a protection from abuse order between divorced parents. All of these types of situations I'm communicating with administrators on and trying to be a bridge between the community and the school. And I will hand it over to the chief, who will talk more about criminal activity.
So very briefly, because I know your time is very valuable, one of the things that Amy does get involved in is reports of criminal activity on the school campus. So what that might look like really depends on the seriousness of the report. Definitely, it's a collaborative process. When a report comes in, Amy's going to be made aware of it. If there are really low-level issues, many times those are going to be handled by school administration. There's not certainly a rush by the police department to make something that happens on campus a criminal justice issue when it doesn't need to be. But as the seriousness of, of a potential crime increases, so does the likelihood that our involvement's going to need to be a little bit deeper. If there are things that need to be investigated criminally, vast majority of the time, we're going to hand those off from Amy to somebody else in the police department. Generally, it's going to be Detective Burns. He's got specialized interview skills and, and enhanced investigative skills. And I think, this is my personal philosophy, this is not shared by every police chief across the country, but any chance we can have to remove the school resource officer from a criminal investigation and not have the school resource officer arresting or charging students, I think is very valuable. I think, I think if, if a student gets themselves in trouble with the law, they still need to have a member of the law that they can turn to, to talk to, to have as a support, and not feel that that relationship has been changed by the, by the enforcement interaction, if you will. So we, we do our very best to, to not have that happen. We really work very hard to keep the lines of communication open with the school. That can be tough when everybody's going in different directions, when there, when there are chaotic circumstances happening, but I think open communication, collaboration is going to reach the best outcome for both us and the school, for keeping the community safe and, and taking care of students. And sometimes it might be in a student's best interest that they are charged with something if it's very serious and the circumstances warrant it. That happens very infrequently. If you ask me how many times in the last five years we've charged a student with a crime for something that happened during school hours, I don't have the number, but you could definitely count it on one hand, I think. So it is, it is a rarity. I'll let Amy talk a little bit more about her day-to-day, and then she'll touch briefly on some of the programmatic responsibilities. So there's things she's doing every day to plug in and take care of business. And then there are quite a few things that she does that are just programs that she's responsible for managing on behalf of the police department at the schools.
So I would say one of the most important things is that relationship building, students, staff, and then also with parents and families. So there's quite a bit of communication that I put a lot of time into with families because I want them to feel like I, I am a resource to them, both during school hours and when they're at home. So I will do home visits with families every once in a while. If I know that maybe there's domestic violence going on in the home, or they're struggling with substance abuse issues, or there's truancy issues, I'm a resource to those families as well. I also work with the district and the building administrative teams to update emergency plans. So when we're talking about any safety topics, I have an opportunity to get looped in on that. I'm part of various teams, like crisis teams in various buildings and other kind of subcommittees that deal with school safety. The other aspect of this that I love is getting into classrooms. I wish I could do it more. But talking about, working with students in those smaller groups and talking about subjects that are within my wheelhouse, talking about consent and boundaries, talking about school safety in general, inclusion and bullying are, are topics that I like to be able to talk to them about. Then that brings us very quickly to the end of the day, where I like to be back out and be a visible presence again when students are getting dismissed between 2:30 and 3:30 in the afternoon. And that, that would be my day if I were to be able to accomplish all the things that I wanted to do in the day. And then emergent issues, again, are, are those ones that, that come up every single day that we don't anticipate. On a broader scale, like Chief Rumsey indicated, there's some programmatic duties that I have that I'm involved in. One of the most important is the Behavioral Threat Assessment Team. So that's a, that's really working towards prevention, and we use a multidisciplinary team to do assessments on any type of threat that comes across. So any threat that's reported that would impact school safety, we have an opportunity. My role, again, allows me to branch out into the community, to work with families, go into homes, and make sure that we're taking prevention seriously. It's one of the behavioral threat assessments are deemed one of the most important pieces of prevent, preventing violence in schools. I'm also on the Safety and Security Committee for the district, working on the ALIS program. We also have a new program coming out, the See Something, Say Something Sandy Hook Promise. That is a, it's an application, an app that you can use for reporting anonymously, and that's another huge piece of prevention work. And then we do communion student programs, bike rodeos. We did a public safety summer camp over this past summer, which was really fun. And I'm also a liaison with some other community committees, such as Casco Bay Can. A little bit of work to do. Turn it back over to Chief.
I think that's, I think that's basically it. I think we covered a lot of ground in a short period of time. I'm very, very supportive of the Behavioral Threat Assessment Team concept. That is a nationwide best practice. That is, that is a concept that is really endorsed by the Maine School Safety Center, and so I'm very happy that Amy gets to have a voice. It's a multidisciplinary team, so it's guidance and it's school administration, and it's Amy, and I think others figuring out how best to wrap around and serve not only the whole school, but also the student that may have uttered a threat that was made out of a minute of fear, or being bullied, or we don't know what the circumstances are. But we do know we've got an incident we need to deal with it, but we're not certainly drilling down with a, with an eye towards taking somebody to jail. We're trying to figure out what's happening and how to best serve everybody. So Amy does a lot, very proud of her, as I think you can tell. And if you have any questions, we are happy to do our best to answer them for you.
I have one, Chief. Early, or in your presentation right at the beginning, you mentioned an MOU. What's an MOU?
Oh, yes, I forgot the jargon. A memo, memorandum of understanding. It's basically just a document that outlines the, the specific relationship between the school, who's responsible for what.
Thanks.
Sure, sorry about that.
Go ahead.
It's, it's almost unfortunate to have Amy up here tonight because her credentials are so overwhelming, and I'm just pleased that the depth of her experience outside of law enforcement that comes to working with parents and students. But I also, the recognition goes further than just Amy. It goes to the whole department. I can't tell you how much I enjoyed that Range Day, and we talk about situational awareness and, and, you know, I watched how that things played out there that day and understand that, that, you know, we have great people on, on the streets here in Cumberland, and the department is really, you know, we, I don't think I can say enough about how much I appreciate the people that are, that are wearing the uniform, and Amy is certainly no slacker.
Thank you, Council. That means a lot. Thank you.
Thank you both for all your time this evening.
You're most welcome.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Manager, for you? All right. Moving to public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone in the audience this evening who wishes to comment on something not on the agenda?
Good evening. Bill Stiles, Range Road. I'm just a little bit disturbed about the economics of the town and the lack of what I consider information going around. Now, I know that you folks aren't involved with the school district, but it would seem to me that since their budget and our budgets combined create a problem for the town. If I understand it correctly, if this school referendum passes, it's going to increase the average tax rate for a person, essentially $200 a year for five years. That means at the end of five years, my taxes will have gone up $1,000. On top of that, the school every year has approximately a 5% increase in their budget, which adds up more to my taxes. On top of that, I understand that they have another fund out there to do about $2 million worth of improvements to one of their buildings. I haven't heard anything about this. I haven't heard the council put anything out on this kind of pending, my case doomed because I, I'm living on a fixed income. I, I don't think that has anything at all to do with the school or anything. It has to do with our town budget overall. And I know you folks struggle to keep your budget in line, and if you want to improve anything, do more, any highway paving, you can't do it with that kind of, of pending burden. And I just think it's, we're, we're not getting enough information out, and I blame some of that on you folks. You should have brought this up, at least told people, don't have to take a side, but tell people exactly what this is going to do to our town and what, how it's going to affect the budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I will say, I think this council has provided space for the school board to partner with us and have. We have representatives on this council on their communications committee. We've invited them to join us at the farmer's market, which they have done as well, so kind of being out there in the public. I know that Whitney has been very open and actively engaging them and making sure information is in the crier for folks to be able to access information. I know from this dais, I reinforced the two public meetings that were happening. To your point, it's not our proposal to sell, and we've made that a point, but we have actively made the point to say that we will be making sure folks are know where to find information because we know historically this information was shared through a newsletter that the general public doesn't usually have access to. It comes from the school district and it only goes to parents. And so that is why we've partnered with Whitney to make sure those same links and information were available on the crier, and again, have reinforced it here. So if you don't feel like specific information is getting out there, we're happy to talk, talk more about that, but we have tried to make sure that folks knew where to find the information from the people that were the subject matter experts on the topic, and that we were not misconstruing or making assumptions on information that we didn't, we weren't part of explicitly. Anything you would add to kind of being on the communications?
Yeah, absolutely. So there will be just a heads up, a mailer sent out to every registered voter with a lot of information on there because we do know that not everyone's on social media, not everyone is always looking on the website. So that is something that should be coming out. I've seen the kind of initial drafts, but that will be mailed out prior to Election Day, of course. Another resource, and I'm happy to kind of direct folks as well, is Monday night's meeting of the school board now has timestamps on the website. So if there's a particular issue that you're concerned with when it comes to kind of the referendum, you can kind of go to that spot directly. We do, you know, Allison mentioned that there were the two additional information sessions, and I know that Kim Vine, who's been really chairing kind of this initiative for communication on the, on the school board level, has really done everything she can to kind of get out into the community and, you know, not, not just the farmer's market, but I believe Whitney, she met with, oh, Mornings with Friends? Did Kim go and sit with Mornings with Friends? But certainly, I think also, you know, to that point, we're, we're not perfect, so that feedback around how we can improve is really, really important, and we'll, we'll kind of take note. But I would urge anyone listening at home or here tonight to please, we're more than happy to sit down, kind of talk through specific issues, whether it be around the financing or the sustainability element, or any, any questions, we're here to answer them. And I apologize if we haven't kind of closed all of those communication gaps, but I will also relay that feedback back to the rest of the team who's working on that communication as well.
Thank you. I was at the morning with Friends discussion, and for the school board, that was disaster. They couldn't answer my questions. I knew more about their budget and what the budget's going on than they did. So that was disaster. But what I'm really saying is I don't believe the budget, the public out there knows that it's a $200 increase, and I'm rounding off here, this year, plus a 200 next year, plus a 200 next year. I don't realize the public, I don't think the public realizes this is a combination that keeps adding up. I just don't see it. I haven't seen that information anywhere. It's all just going to be a certain increase, but we'll have a new school, it's going to only cost you $200. only cost you $200, so to speak, on your taxes. They don't say that that's 200 this year plus another 200 next year, and it keeps adding up, and it never goes down. So if you're on a fixed income, every time somebody tags something like that to you, how do you combat it? How do you combat it? Now, I know all of you folks, the young folks up there, you're still working, you're still able to put a little more time and get a little more money to, to pay some of these extra things. But those of us who aren't have to scrimp and save. And when you start hitting people with a $200 increase, okay, I can handle one, 200, but not five years in a row, plus, again, the traditional 5% increase, plus whatever it's going to cost to maintain a new building, plus all of these other things. Most of these school board meetings have not been well attended. There's not been a good, in my mind, and I haven't seen, I've looked at them all, but I haven't seen Whitney come out and say what I just said. She's talked about things, but she hasn't said, this is going to cost me $1,000. 200 this year, 200 next year, et cetera. And what I'm saying is when you sit down and start putting a pen to this, it has not been explained to the public in that manner. It just hasn't.
Any other comments from the public? Moving to legislation and policy, 22-130, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on the 2023 shellfish license allocations as recommended by the Shellfish Conservation Commission. Yes, commission. I will say, I believe this is, we do have unlimited licenses for our shellfish, so this is kind of just the, the formality of documenting kind of what our allocation is. Sorry, we have unlimited resident recreational licenses and then the allocations to non-residents for recreational and then the commercial licenses. Do I have any questions or comments from the council?
I had, I had one question. Is, is Michael Brown here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. Hey, Mike. Yeah, if you don't mind, not to put you on the spot here, but you're definitely on the spot. A very hopefully basic question for you. I was just curious, I noticed that for residents, for recreational licenses, they are unlimited. But then I noticed there's also this option for eight monthly resident license. Why would, what's the difference between a monthly license and just an unlimited?
No, and I believe that might have come up as an issue last year as well. That's, that's more of something just to maintain that as a license category because the licenses are presently unlimited and there is no fee beyond the conservation fee for both resident recreational and non-resident recreational. There would be no advantage to purchasing a monthly license instead of an annual license. So it would be the same $10 fee.
Got it. Okay.
I will, I will say, Michael, while you're here, I think one of the items you guys had for discussion at the meeting was around that fee that you just referenced and decided to not kind of put that forward at this time. Can you talk a little bit about that and kind of what you found relative to neighboring?
Yeah, I mean, definitely our fee, particularly as it relates to the recreational licenses, is noticeably lower than anybody else. There's, there's really nobody else that is offering a free license. Essentially, that's where we're at. We did leave the $10 conservation fee in place. You know, but we had conversations about reinstating that license fee at this point in time. Originally, when that was waived or brought down to zero, it was more in recognition of some of the legacy licenses. The digging was pretty abysmal, and there were indications that it may not recover just due to a shifting ecology, whether that be acidification or predation from green crabs. You know, there were, there were a variety of different factors that were combining. It made it unclear whether or not there would still be active shellfish harvesting in Cumberland. A recent spat set about two years ago has led to some recovery of the resource. We're looking forward to doing surveys in the upcoming year. It was not a large turnout for the Shellfish Commission. So I, you know, but if you're looking at our minutes, you know, I, I don't know that that accurately reflects the opinion of all members, but certainly the vote taken by the members who arrived that evening, we did have a quorum, was to leave the license allocations and fees unchanged at this juncture. But I do speculate that that's subject to additional conversations in the near to immediate future.
Mike, how's the quality of the, the population and the green crab affecting it? And is there enough clams for the, the two commercial licenses to make a living?
I don't, from my, I haven't seen the logs associated with either one. I would find it hard to believe that anyone is supporting a family or paying tuition or a tax bill harvesting shellfish commercially in Cumberland. Perhaps Cumberland in addition to another area. There are a lot of co-hogs and some, I said urchins, but oysters. And so there are, and razor clams, so there are opportunities to harvest other species that they might take advantage of. But the soft shell resource really has rebounded on the southerly end of town, a little bit less prevalent on the north end. So just shifting ecology, but it's wonderful to see them come back and particularly in proximity to the access provided through the council and the town at Broad Cove. You know, that's an amazing resource and it was unfortunate to watch the clamming, you know, really suffer at the same time when we finally had, you know, great oceanfront access. But fingers crossed, there were even some conversations at the last meeting as it related to seeding. That has not gone, those conversations have not gone well in years past, but there seems to be some emerging interest. That could also lead to a rebound towards the northern end of town.
Any questions or comments from the public? I will entertain a motion. I would be interested, clearly my question, and you answered it appropriately on the feeds and that makes sense kind of with the changes that are coming, but I, I would ask that you kind of put that on a next agenda to kind of revisit again as we continue to see. Does that reaction still hold as we look at surrounding?
Is that something the council would like us to revisit prior to licenses being issued in January or in conjunction with our allocation?
No, I would say, yeah, like as you look at it for next time, I think we're still seeing we're in this flux, but I guess I would say probably don't want to kick that can too much farther.
And, and just bear in mind, so the, the way that this works is the Shellfish Commission, we make recommendations for allocations and fees and things of that sort. The final authority rests with each of you. So feel free.
I, I think the difficult thing though, Mike, is that our clamming year begins in January. So if we're, if we're looking to start a different, a, a new fee structure, it really needs to come during this time of year in September, October, November, so that clambers can prepare for next season. So if the council is comfortable, just asking the commission to go forward and maybe revisit this for your next recommendation, Mike, I think that would be appropriate and, and get more of the commission at the meeting so, you know, they can participate in that discussion. It's been a while since we've done anything other than just this recommendation because there have been no clams and there have been pollution issues as well as the green crabs that have pretty much decimated our clam population for a while, but they are coming back and people are getting clams again, but not to the extent they did in the early 2000s and late 1900s. It was really pretty rich harvesting ground and a lot of people benefited from that. But right now, we're, we're kind of rebounding. What, what happens, Mike, with the reciprocity we have with Shabig Island for clamming? Are, are you seeing any locals here going out to Shabig Island and, you know, getting a clam license, or is that just more anecdotal than anything?
So I, I know it was a point of contention at the time. I'm not aware of anyone currently going out to Shabig and digging, nor am I aware of anyone coming from Shabig and digging here. Just for reference, any resident of the town of Shabig or the island of Shabig would be eligible to purchase a Cumberland resident license, and we would have the same opportunity from Shabig.
So it's been around for a while, and I, I think, I think the commission has done a great job, but I think it might be time to open that chapter back up again and see if we can basically cover some revenues, at least, you know, just even for issuing the licenses now, it's, it's, there's not a lot of revenue raised through licenses.
No.
Yeah, to put it in perspective, last year was about, well, about, there were 68 resident recreational licenses and we did sell all 25 of the non-resident. So, and both commercial licenses were sold.
I will take a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll give you a motion. I move to approve the 2023 shellfish license allocations as recommended by the Shellfish Conservation Commission.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you all. I look forward to talking again next year.
Thanks, Mike.
Next is 22-131, to hear a report from the finance director regarding end of year and first quarter financials. Thank you, Helene.
Hi, good evening. So we'll just start with the 22 fiscal year end. I know the last time we spoke, we weren't quite at year end yet. The auditors are just about finished, so this isn't quite final final, but you'll get that report from her when she's completed her end. But I haven't gotten any more adjusting entries, so we're pretty much done at this point. So just to finalize where we were, where we ended our general fund, our revenues came in 129% over budget, and we'll get into a little bit on the details of why that happened. We went a little bit conservative on our revenues. As you know, we, for a second year in a row, because we weren't quite sure where we were going to land with a couple of our revenue streams, we went conservative. And, and then in regards to our expenses, you know, we came in a little, we went a little over budget on our expenses. Nothing unexpected there, and our fixed expenses as well came in on budget. So in regards to why we came in so over budget, our excise tax, we were about $200,000 over budget on our excise tax. So what we're seeing is that this is about where we're thinking we're going to end up being on our excise tax. If you remember, in 2000, we were a little bit on the low side because that's when we had COVID came in, so we, we lost some revenue on that end because we had to shut down towards that, that downturn of COVID. '21, we had a big uptick because we were collecting some of what we lost from '20. And then '22 seems to be where we, where we're smoothing it out, and you'll see in first quarter '23, where it seems to be on the same kind of collection line of being at about 2.2 million. Our state revenue sharing, that's where we, we took that big collection. Again, it's a revenue stream. We never know where we're going to be. When we went into COVID, we thought we were going to be seeing that come down, that number come down, and that number surprises us every single year. We ended up collecting 1.5 million. Who would have guessed? Again, during this time of the, you know, everybody's telling us recession, recession, and we collected 1.5 million. Again, permits and impact fees, a number we would never guess that we would continue seeing this number going up. So again, a number we weren't expecting to see to grow to this magnitude. And our emergency and transportation billing came in a lot higher than we expected to. And again, this is a number that we can't predict from year to year. This is based on our services. So a lot of these numbers are what, where, where our revenues came in high. And this is a collection of the last 10 years of our property tax collections. And so you can see for the last two years in a row have been our best collection years that we've had. We were at a 99.6% collection rate, which is the best it's been, which is great and amazing considering the economic conditions that have, we've had around us. So we're in a good place. Cumberland's a great place to live, and our residents have been great to us. And, and as far as our expenses go, as you can see, our big, our big three departments did well as far as expenses despite our overtime and shortage of employees. We still were able to stay within their budget lines. Public services did go over a little bit, but nothing too concerning in regards to why they went over budget. Valhalla, when we look at revenues and expenses, they netted, we actually budgeted them at a $100,000 loss. They actually came in with $157,000 gain. That also was a reason why our overall general fund budget did well. And then when we look at the recreation department, we had netted them at a $41,000 loss. They came in a little bit higher of a loss at $80,000, and a lot of that has to do with not being able to run the programs that we were hoping they would run. A lot of it, they are also struggling with being able to hire enough employees so that they can run the programming. Their programming is based on having enough employees, based on, you know, grouping with children, so they don't have the, the staffing capacity, then they can't run the program. So they have a bigger chance of losing the potential for, for, for a more profitable program.
Am I interpreting this one kind of correctly, Helene? Right, where it would appear that even if the programs happen potentially not at like the full capacity that we would have? So you still have kind of that staffing happening. We came in kind of over budget slightly, but revenues, I mean, they did exceed our budget, just not at the same level that our expenses did.
Correct.
So it's kind of like, folks are getting in there, but maybe instead of having the 15, we only have 12, and so you just don't have that little bit more of revenue.
Not the profit margin that we were hoping to, to cover our overhead. And you could see that in the detail in your packet. When you look at the, more of the detail on the, by the, by program, you'll see that every program actually made a profit, just not enough to cover their overhead.
Thank you.
And, but overall, we still made our goal of the 11.5% fund balance that we were hoping to be at, at the end of FY '22. So our new goal for FY '23 will still be moving forward to get us to 12%. And that's what I have for fourth quarter. So do we have any questions on FY '22? And again, all the more detail is in the back of the packet. I also have in the back of the packet more of the detail on all your other funds, your building fund, your CIPs, and all your other funds that you know you have out there, your solar fund we've put away for, that we talked about at the end of your fiscal year end that we put aside. You've saved two years for your solar, two out of your five years we put away for, we put away for debt service. We've, I'm trying, I'm going by memory, which is not too good these days. And what else did we put away for? Debt service, CIP.
Building reserves.
Building reserves. Yeah, building reserves is very healthy, so. So if you have any additional questions?
Maybe it's early to, for comments too, but Mark and I are on the finance committee and we had a much more thorough review of this the other night. And anyways, it's, the fiscal responsibility and the, the, the way the town has saved money. it's, um, uh, the fiscal responsibility and the, the, the way the town has saved money, spent money prudently, I, I'd go a long ways before anybody find any way to criticize what goes on here. So, I'm, I'm very pleased with where we are and where we're headed.
I know we're also going to go through first quarter, but any other questions on end of year for Helene? Proceed, please.
Again, first quarter, it's just a kind of a quick snapshot, doesn't really give us too much information, just kind of give us a guide on where we're going. A lot of issues tend to be kind of timing during our first quarter, because a lot's happening. Everybody's excited, because the budget starts moving. We've, we had some conversations, because as you look here, you'll see that first quarter, we're already almost looking like we're already halfway to our revenue budget, and we'll see that in a minute, why we, we get halfway through our revenue budget. And when you look at our expenses, we're a little bit more than quarter, more than a quarter way through our, our, our expenses, and I could also explain that in a minute, but we'll get there. So in regards to our expenses, you'll see that our excise tax is a little bit slower than it was where we were last year, but our revenue sharing looks like it slowed down, but in actuality, it hasn't, because our budget last year was eight-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars. Our budget this year is one-point-three million dollars. So if you actually compared it to the same budget line as last year, we would be fifty percent instead of, you know, forty-five percent. So, so we're, we're in good shape there. And the same thing with our impact fees and permits. We're still headed in that same direction. It looks, we're already at fifty percent collection there. And our EMT, or Emergency Transportation, it looks kind of low, but what we're doing is we're applying our revenues first to our receivables from last year, before we start applying it to what we receive for this year first.
Hey, Helene, I just have a quick question for you. Is there a time of year when excise taxes revenues seem to come in the door? Is that, or does it just, there's no rhyme or reason to it?
I have not been able to really put a finger on it. June, July seems to be like their, the heavier timeframe where it happens. I mean, I'm a culprit of that. It tends to be where I either choose June, or if I'm running late, I do July. I mean, I still have to see Ron, because I, my, my inspection is expired from August, and here we are in October, you know? So, it's, I, it gets worse every year. My, my timeframe keeps getting pushed out, so. So, and I think a lot of people, I think COVID kind of moved that target for a lot of people, so it, but I think June, July tends to be that, where we see that, those heavy time periods for the excise tax.
Got it.
For a lot of people.
I, I think we are heading for that cliff with excise tax, though, because of interest rates and lack of production, because remember, your excise taxes are tiered, and over five years, they go down, they go down, they go down, and they stop going down. We had a glut of cars in that high, high tier of, of, of purchases, and that was overwhelming, to be honest with you, and we just kept adding more money and adding more money. But I think we're going to be very, very close this year on meeting our excise tax budget, because people can't buy new cars, and we have gone as far as we can, and that high tier of cars, which typically take about twenty percent of the revenues that come in, are just not going to be up that high. I think we're going to see, if we make our number this year, I think we'll be fortunate. And then I think next year, we will have to look at it and just say, do we just leave it alone for a year and let it stabilize a little bit? Because no one wants to be that high in, in exceedance of revenues, because that's just, that was just like Helene explained, nobody could explain that, how cars just kept getting bought and bought and bought, and excise tax revenues were growing at a crazy rate. And the same thing with buildings. I mean, nobody expected that, but I think we're seeing the other side of that now. So I think the conservative budgeting we have been trying to do will at least get us to the finish line this year. But excise taxes, you know, it's a crystal ball sometimes. All of a sudden, you think you have it figured out, and then, you know, zero financing for, you know, eight years comes out, and then you're just sitting there going, oh, wow, what are we, what are we waiting for? But this time around, there's not much to purchase. I mean, I drive by your lot, Ron, and it's pretty empty.
It, it's not the fact that people can't, they can't buy a car right now. I mean, if you want a car, it takes a year to find one, and not only is it automobiles, but it's construction equipment, commercial dump trucks. If you want to buy a commercial dump truck, which is two-hundred-thousand dollars now, it's a year wait. If you order it today, it will be one year from now before you can see it. You know, and the economy has been good, and people have ordered this stuff, but they're waiting for it to come in. You know, we, we live in a community where everybody drives Teslas and Volvos and Audis, and we have expensive vehicles, but you can't just go buy one. You'll have to wait the time period for it to come in, and the prices of vehicles are through the roof now. So, I mean, you know, it's nothing to be paying ten-thousand dollars over sticker, so.
Well, it's, it's something we talked about as well, as part of our Finance Committee meeting the other night. One of the reasons we're trying to be so conservative in our budget numbers is because some of these things are larger macroeconomic issues that, that are fully outside of our control as the, as the town here. I think of state revenue sharing being one of them. I mean, that was a windfall last year, and that's obviously dictated by sales tax. And so if people, if the economy changes and people aren't buying as much, and then the sales tax revenues dip, then obviously that's a dip in our revenue on the other side as well. And so it's, it's important that we keep those in mind, and we don't look at those numbers and say, hey, let's budget that for the next year as well, especially with things like schools coming into play, and, yeah, just, just keeping that into consideration.
Right, because we can seriously hurt our financial situation if we don't keep an eye on that. So again, expenses are a little bit up on the police, fire, and public services, and what I'm seeing as the trend is, a lot of the purchases are things that you normally wouldn't see being purchased on a quarterly basis, just those non, non-quarterly purchases. For instance, public service, services would be making purchases for supplies ahead of time, in, in preparation for, you know, the next season coming up, or the police department and fire as well, getting in preparation again, knowing that it, it takes a while to get, receive supplies, and, and that's what we're seeing. Things take a while for, for, for items to come in, so they're making sure that they're having supplies on hand. So things are being purchased a little bit ahead, not, not in excessive. They're still overall under budget, but just, overall under budget, but just a little bit of, ahead of a quarterly budget. Again, Valhalla for the season, and another reason why we saw our revenues ahead of the quarter is Valhalla did well for the first quarter for their, their season, their summer season, so kudos to Valhalla. And right now, REC is doing well, did well for their, their summer program. They, they came in, their summer program did very well this year, so hopefully that, that's going to give them a good running start for this year, and they'll make up for our ending of last year. So that's where we are right now for the first quarter. Questions, comments?
I'm good.
No.
Thank you, Helene.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Twenty-two dash one three two, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on amendments to Chapter three fifteen zoning, Section twenty-eight of the Cumberland Code to add a new overlay district number six, Public Safety Telecommunications Overlay District, to include the parcels at Tax Map R zero three, lots twenty-five and twenty-six, and Map R zero seven, Lot thirty-four A, to establish areas where telecommunications facilities may be located for the proper communication by and between public safety agencies and organizations of the town, as recommended by the Planning Board.
Madam Chair, I believe we would need a motion on the, on the previous topic.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Just to close the logo.
I was going to let her get away with that for a few minutes.
Sorry. I'm like, it's a report. Good, Helene's on it. I apologize. Thank you.
I will happily give you one, as the Finance Chair here. I move to accept the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two end-of-year financial report and fiscal year twenty-three first-quarter financial report, as recommended by the Finance Committee.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, sir. All right. Moving to twenty-two dash one three two, I'm not reading that all over again. So, this is, it, it would allow cell tower erection, as well as private money to erect the towers. This would be a change, obviously, to establishing a new overlay district. Bob, I don't know, kind of, if you were at that Planning Board meeting, if there's anything you would like to hit on for the council?
It's really, I won't say it's a, it's a housekeeping matter, but it is a, a means for the town to control areas where there are towers, that where they're appropriate, and it's, it's more of a, a lot of it really is the science of locating it where they're most effective. And so these two places are the, probably the best, where they're going to be the least amount of site interference, for lack of a better word. So, it, there was not a lot of discussion, it was pro forma, and so I think it's, we need to do it so we can build a tower at some point.
Any questions from the council?
Allison.
Yes.
Just a couple, when you get a chance. Ron, any questions?
These lots, town-owned lots, Bill?
These are town-owned properties, and also remember that this was as recommended by the Planning Board. When the Planning Board went through the review of this, there was an item E, the colocation requirements not applicable. I couldn't explain it, and I couldn't really understand why colocation wouldn't be required if possible. The only explanation that I really received was that if there are interference with our radio equipment, that might make colocation difficult. So that would be the only reason, but I would think that if they're on our property, on property we've leased, we would be pretty clear that interference with our radio equipment would, would make that next location of an antenna inappropriate. I think, just to take you back a little bit further, is that this all started when the police chief came to you and asked if he could apply for a grant for a radio study. That radio path study was done, there was a twenty-thousand-dollar grant he received and, and was successful with. That radio consultant came here and confused the heck out of us, but basically showed us the locations where we would need towers that would work for a, basically, a public safety radio system. Our, our patrol officers, our firefighters cannot hear on portable radios when they're outside of the, outside of their vehicles in many areas of our town today. That system was designed so that these towers would have to be a hundred-and-eighty feet tall. Our ordinance only allows today for a hundred. And what we didn't want to do was allow for proliferation of radio towers everywhere, I think, like you all understood. So when we, when we went to the town attorney, we went, originally, we're, we're looking at a contract zone to ourselves, and that just didn't seem right. So we said, well, how do we create an overlay zone that would allow for public communication systems to be located on specific parcels of land? And that's how this whole ordinance got developed. These two towers would be located at the end of Range Way. We've tried to get, there's no additional capacity on the hundred-and-eighty-foot tower that's there today. So right around the corner, there are two town-owned lots that were tax-acquired decades ago, that would serve for the location of this. The lease conditions of that parcel, they're typically one-hundred-by-one-hundred lease areas, that would, those conditions would be up to you. Typically, these are all fenced-in areas. We have the same thing at Valhalla now with a hundred-foot tower there. That area would not restrict any further use of that property, because that's all up to you. All they would have rights to is a driveway up to this area, and we would have rights, continued rights on the rest of that parcel that's at the end of Range Way. The other parcel is located out at the West Cumberland Athletic Complex, on that, I think it's ten or twelve acres we own out there. That would have to be located somehow, so not to interfere with the baseball and football and other things. And those towers would be designed to basically kind of fall in on itself, not just tip over. Most towers don't tip over, from what we've heard from our experts. So a lot of those details would come out in those lease agreements and those arrangements, and they still have to go before the Planning Board for a site plan approval, so that doesn't change. So there's a lot more, a lot more bites at the apple that the Planning Board has. Their, their only request was that E be eliminated, and we have no objection to that. So that's why the, that's why the motion, I think, is written as recommended by the Planning Board. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
So, just for my clarification here, it seemed like there was this legal question as to whether a contract zone was the appropriate vehicle to get this done, and it seemed like you don't enter into a contract zone with yourself effectively, right?
Well, we don't, we don't even have a dance partner at this point. We have one person that, one company that's interested. They obviously needed this ordinance to make it work. We hope that they'll be before you in November with a request to lease the property on Range Road, uh, Range Way, I should say. And if that happens, great, that will save us over four-hundred-thousand dollars. We have nobody in the west yet that has approached us for a tower, so we'll be trying to solicit proposals for a tower out there as well. And where they're near corridors of the highway, they become more valuable. This one's near Route one hundred corridor, this one is near the two-ninety-five Route one corridor, so hopefully we'll see some improvement on our cell service as well.
Bill, is the cost identical for both towers, four-hundred-thousand dollars?
Uh, approximately, yes. They're both the same-sized towers.
Go ahead, Ron.
In time, will this be a money-generating venture for the town of Cumberland?
Absolutely. These leases are for a cost. We generate about twenty-five-thousand dollars a year in revenues from the Valhalla Tower.
Right.
We're, we're asking somebody to build this for us as well, so we don't have any skin in that game, and when they build it for us, they're also required to have a plan to take it down if it's no longer functioning, so.
And I know that everybody that, the people that have these, they make money off of them, that's why I wanted to bring that up. I mean, this is not just a cost, this is a money-making venture, so.
But they have reserved a very specific area on that tower for us, similar to what the radio communication folks have showed you. Our consultant has been, every step of the way, involved in this process, has reviewed the ordinance, and has reviewed the, the diagrams, so that we're not shut out because we allowed this to happen. We're actually reserving that area on the tower to allow us to put our communication system on. They're not paying for that at this point. I mean, if they, if you want them to pay for it, we might lose our lease payments, but other towns have actually sold their leases on these towers in advance to pay for some of that equipment, too. I think Yarmouth made over six-hundred-thousand dollars when they sold their lease on their radio tower, so.
But I presume they didn't need that space?
No, I don't think they did either. I think they built the tower themselves, and they were fortunate. They, I think they did it right in conjunction with their new station.
Got it. And will the two towers provide us sufficient real estate on those towers for the police and first responder?
For those, for those two, but remember, there'll also be the Valhalla Tower we'll be using, and there'll also be, we'll have to work with Chabique Island for additional equipment out on Chabique Island. So the, the whole cost of, of, of this whole program will, would be close to three-million dollars. We could bring it down to two-million dollars if, if we can get these towers built by somebody else, and that's, that's a lot of money to reduce off a project like this.
I think that is, like, this specific change, this overlay district, is actually stating the requirement that they have to have space on their antenna, and that is part of the space and bulk standard section of this, is stating the requirement of, they need to meet, they need to save that dimensional requirements and mounting for public safety specifically. Is that fair?
That is correct.
Is my interpretation?
That is absolutely correct.
Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who has questions or comments on this agenda item?
Madam Chairman, I'm Mike Schwinn, Chair of your Lands and Conservation Commission. My concern on this one is not necessarily whether or not the tower is needed or anything like that, or whether or not it's a good deal on the tower. My concern is the fact that this is before you, before whatever. My concern is the fact that this is before you, before it ever got before the Lands and Conservation Commission. According to the ordinance, 315D, one of our jobs is to offer input and recommendations to the town council regarding any proposed development of town-owned property or any significant proposed change to the use of town-owned property. Seems to me sticking a tower on open ground would be one of those things that would be considered significant. A couple of years ago, there was a proposal to put a, a tower out there, I believe it was from MCI, I may be dead wrong on that, but it was one of the phone companies. This had a brief discussion with the, with the Lands and Conservation Commission, never got to a point of a final decision, because if I understand correctly, they walked away from the deal. When I asked about this several months ago, I was told it was a dead deal. I do know that a number of the members of the commission had concerns about the towers and where they were going on there, and I think this is going on to the same area over on Range Road. The discussion or the, the land or the tower over on Blackstrap was never part of that discussion. It bothers me that that, this is not the first time that, that something has come before you, that we have a role in which we should be taking part in. We found out about it when initially, when, when we see the planning board agenda on October 4th. Our meeting was on October 5th. We have the first Wednesday of every month that's scheduled. I sent out the agenda for our Lands and Conservation Commission agenda usually the weekend before, so it is Saturday, Sunday, somewhere in there. So my agenda was out before the, before the, before the planning board agenda came out, and when it did come out, there was no attachments that were live to that. It mentioned the items only. The links weren't there at that point, so I couldn't find out anything about it. I do find that in July, on July 7th, the ordinance committee meeting made reference to our contract of building a tower and putting some of our equipment on that. We've met, the Lands and Conservation Commission met in August, September, and October, and at no time was this issue ever raised, or were we apprised of this coming down the road? So I simply feel we cannot do our job if we do not know what's coming down the road, and we didn't know about this one at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I, I know we talked about it this weekend, and I, I will accept and apologize that the LCC was missed in this conversation. I will say that at this point, there is no tower being erected, there's no lease that this item is, that is not what's being discussed here at the council. It is providing the overlay district so that it is a possibility with the requirement now of having it be a public safe, having space for public safety. You know, that doesn't necessarily change your point, Mike, in that it is a change to land kind of permissible use, if you will, on town-owned property. So I recognize, I know that we have certain triggers and kind of processes that aren't always linear, and kind of timing does not always align perfectly, but committed to kind of do better. But I, I do invite kind of, if we do have something on the agenda in November that is a real kind of proposal, if you will, to the actual use of the land, obviously, we'll want to make sure that the LCC kind of has the opportunity, either at their meeting or if the timing doesn't work, has an opportunity to decide to call a special meeting. Is that appropriate?
Well, when, when Mike raised the issue with me, I basically responded, yes, my bad, I, I should have brought it to the LCC earlier. It was kind of a fluid process, because we were bouncing back and forth between contract zone, which would have been a much longer process in ordinance. But I've asked to be on the November LCC meeting, and I'm happy to present and share the documents and share the locations and all the, all the things necessary to, you know, enable them to give you a recommendation for, I think your meeting comes after theirs in November.
Yep.
So.
Go ahead, Bob.
I, I think that if there's an opportunity for us here to table this tonight, for them to have that review, I would feel better about this. I think having been on boards and had, not had our recommendations considered, I, you know, this does not give me a good feeling. I was absolutely prepared to vote for this this evening, but having heard what Mike said, I would like to be able to give them the opportunity to review this, and if it's appropriate, I'd rather delay our decision for two weeks, or no?
No. We are, this is, like I said, a very fast-moving, fluid process. We've been working very closely with this vendor, and they would like to be before you at your November meeting, which is after the Lands and Conservation Commission meeting with a recommendation. Nothing on this tonight would prohibit you from passing the ordinance, it just allows for the overlay district to be on these certain pieces of parcel. The contract or lease agreement isn't going to be before you until November, and I can forward that to the LCC, I can forward all the other information. And that would, that would be before your meeting. This is all ordinance language to permit this use, not to, not to enter into an agreement with any other third party. We are attempt, we are also attempting to be at the planning board meeting, so this can move forward in the, at the first of next year. So they will most likely, if, if passed at your November meeting, be at the planning board in December. If that's delayed, then we're, I'm not sure if we're going to lose the contract or not. So that's the risk we take. That's your call. It does require four votes tonight, so if it's a split vote, it's defeated.
I will say, at least from the conversation I've had, that there were more concerns about the actual tower that was proposed to be erected versus the parcel of land, but you did just allude that there are potentially some issues of the location as well. I think based on the sequencing, the need that was very much expressed, and I think very clearly shown to us this summer around the public safety need, that if these are two parcels of land that provide that opportunity, I don't know where else we would put it to be able to fulfill this need, regardless of if we had a dance partner or not. That's just my sentiment. So if we believe we have this need and would need to do something at some point, either with our own money or with a partner, I don't know where else we would put it. So if we, which I think we came out of summer saying, we hear your need, do not have the funds. This item just says that these are the parcels of land that would require having space for public safety.
At the end of the day, the, the council has the authority to act on any manner it sees fit, whether or not we take a recommendation from the planning board, the Lands and Conservation Commission, or any committee that we constituted. I think what, my point here is, is the, and I agree with you, we're, this is, this is a piece of land that's appropriate for the use, it's, we're, we intend for it. It's making sure that the procedurally, we've, we've done right by the people that we appoint to serve on our committees. If time is of the essence, and we're, we have, if we failed in our, let it be known that we have failed, and we're going to move ahead, but I, I don't, I don't take a lot of the pleasure in my actions.
I'll, I'll just, I'll chime in and say that I apologize, I was not at the last LCC meeting, because it was on Yom Kippur, so I was unable to bring any of these items over, so I apologize for that. But I do think that if we are committed to having an open dialogue at the next LCC meeting in November, and Bill, I think you've just committed to be there as well, so I think that if we have that opportunity to really take a deep dive into what the actual tower, or kind of those implications are, personally, I don't have an issue with moving forward with the ordinance, the overlay district tonight.
Yeah, and if I can just add, I was at the LCC meeting. I know you weren't able to attend, given the, the conflict, but I think Mike, to Mike's point, this wasn't on the agenda, because the agenda was sent out prior to this moving forward. And so I think Mike highlights a very important point, which is that they are the commission that should be assisting us with this, and we can do better. But I personally will be moving this forward tonight, but I appreciate you raising the issue, because it's very important.
I will entertain a motion. Whatever that may be.
I'd be motion, Madam Chair. I move to amend Chapter 315 zoning, Section 28 of the Cumberland Code, to add a new overlay district, number six, Public Safety Telecommunications Overlay District, to include the parcels at tax map RO3 Lot 25 and Lot 26, and map RO7 Lot 34A, to establish areas where telecommunications facilities may be located for the proper communication by and between public safety agencies and organizations of the town, as recommended by the planning board.
Second. Motion and a second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you. 22-133, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to the official zoning overlay map of the town of Cumberland, to add a new public safety telecommunications overlay district, as recommended by the planning board. So this is the next action in relation to what we just covered, to actually enact what we just passed. Accurate?
Accurate.
Have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments? This is a public hearing. Any comments from the public? All those in favor? Thank you. 22-134, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 84, Fees and Fines, Section 16, Rezoning or Contract Zone Fee, see zoning text chain of the Cumberland Code. So this is increasing the zoning text change, so every time we have to actually change the map, we would be increasing the fee from $350 to $600.
And this is just to cover our cost, effectively?
Yep.
Is that enough?
Well, the, the problem is that in the past, when we've had zoning map changes, we've tried to wait a little bit.
Right.
What we have found from our town attorney, they've basically said, you have to have the most current zoning maps up. We've put paper maps up, and we've had the town clerk sign those, but when we get multiple changes to maps, we try to aggregate them, so we don't change it five times in a year. But sometimes, we don't have a choice. So when somebody comes in and says, I'd like my, my lot to be in this district versus that district, while it seems like a very simple and reasonable process, we have to redo the whole zoning map again. And that's the only reason. We don't, we, we try to spread those costs, so if there's, if we know there's two or three coming, we kind of put them together, but the bottom line is, that's the cost. And we're happy to reimburse people if, if we can get it done cheaper, but so far, not, it's been out-of-pocket cost to us.
Go ahead, Ron.
Roughly, how many times did we do that last year, Bill? I remember quite a few.
Quite a few. Quite a few.
This is a public hearing. Any comments or questions from the public on this item? Question, go ahead, Mike.
I'll give you a motion.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah. I move to amend Chapter 84, Fines and Fees, Section 16, Rezoning or Contract Zone Fee, see zoning text change of the Cumberland Code.
Second. All those in favor? Thank you. 22-135, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 242, Stormwater Management of the Cumberland Code, to add new Articles 3, Erosion and Sedimentation Control, and 4, Low Impact Development, as recommended by the planning board. I was going to attempt to explain this one, but I'm just going to send it over to you, Bill.
So here's the, the pains of growth. As we grew as a community, we, we became looked at in a very different way by the DEP. Once you read, reach a population of over 1,000 people per square mile, like we are in the center of town, and sections of the four side and Route 1, the state, as well as the federal government, look at it, look at us differently. And we get into a classification for all, all our stormwater management under a federal permit. So every five years, we have to adopt a federal and get licensed under the EPA, which is handled by the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, I'll try to stay away from acronyms, but the Environmental Protection Agency is a federal agency. The Maine Department of Environmental Protection is the state agency that delegates through them the laws of the federal government onto the municipalities. Now, since we are a more densely populated community, we have to watch how stormwater is managed, and how erosion control, how construction activities, how everything we do is monitored. Cumberland County has a number of impaired water bodies and impaired streams, and because of that, the EPA has gotten involved and said, you need to start working together as regions on Brooks, on portions of watersheds that are, have been impaired or negatively impacted. And to do that, we're going to hold you to a five-year permit. Each five years, we're going to look at, what are you going to do as a community to make, to ensure the water quality of your watersheds are improving, instead of going in the opposite direction? Those two, that permit now is in, it took us, it took us a long time, along with 30 other communities, to adopt this statewide permit for almost 60 communities in the state of Maine. There's a group around the Bangor area, and there's a huge group around the Portland area. We will be doing things like we've always been doing, catch basin cleaning, monitoring water outfalls, the stormwater outfalls after major rain events. We will always have separated systems. When I talk about that, in many communities, the stormwater, which is, collects the surface water, and the sewer system are combined systems. And those systems go out into the ocean. It's the dilution is the solution method, and that's no longer allowed. Portland has spent almost over $80 million in trying to separate out their stormwater from their sewer. We were fortunate. Our store, our sewer system came out a later date, we didn't have that issue, but we still have water quality issues. We, we heard tonight from Mike Brown, we had many years where we were closed for pollution reasons along the flats, and those pollution reasons came from failing septic systems near the coast, but also it came from stormwater, water quality that just impaired the shellfish as well. So we've been, it's kind of a work in progress. These two ordinances are new chapters to our stormwater license. One, one, the LID, the Low Impact Development, won't happen statewide until July 1st of 2024, but we are preparing for that, because they're all kind of married together. When our developers come in with plans, and subdivision plans, and site plans, all of those still have to follow these laws. Most of these will be technical procedures that are adopted well before the planning board sees them, and will be reviewed by our outside consultants for compliance with state as well as federal laws. Our staff has went through this, myself and Chris Bolduc, and Lauren Nolesky, and Bill Longley, we went through both of these chapters, and we feel, we, we can comply with what is required. It's going to make development more difficult, it always does. Anytime we add another layer of regulations, it does make things more difficult. But we also have to look at the quality of, of the stormwater and the impacts to our ecology, and our wildlife, and our fish, and everything else, and everything has an impact. So if we can do a better job at managing that, then now it's going to be codified where it wasn't before. It's a long way of saying, we kind of have to do this in many, in many regards, and all these towns came together to put together these ordinances, so that we would all be uniform as multiple towns, and not just, we would have one ordinance, Yarmouth would have something else, Falmouth would have, all our neighbors are adopting the same ordinances, and we'll be working with this over the course of this month in particular for the stormwater part, but the LID will also be coming very shortly thereafter. So we felt, we're ready to move it forward, and ready to codify it and start working toward a, you know, a better water quality for the town of Cumberland.
Thank you, Bill. Go ahead, Mike.
I had one question for you, Bill. Is there any state funding for this in terms of what were the additional workload on you and the staff?
No. Unfortunately, there are some grants that have helped in basically putting, helping codify some of this stuff. But collectively, we just got together as a bunch of communities to try to do this together. And there were no federal monies. Remember, anything that's put down onto you by the state and as a state mandate, has to be funded. But if it's a federal law, that doesn't require the same type of funding. So we had to do this out of our environmental reserve budget, which is, we've been funding at about $35,000 a year, primarily for just the development of ordinances and, and compliance with these stormwater permits.
Bill, do you anticipate that this will kind of continue to evolve, especially with LD 2003?
I do. I do. I, I don't think the 2003 will have a true impact on this because most of that development, I think, will occur in developed areas where you have water and sewer and stormwater. And it's easier to build more densely with, with all those utilities. I, I think this will only evolve in every five years. When we get a new permit, there'll be a new level that we have to reach. Next time, we'll have to show plans on how we're gonna manage, I'm trying to think of the name of the brook that's, that comes across Route 100 by the power lines wrong, by J. Brothers, that brook right there. That comes out of Wyndham. In, in Wyndham and, and Falmouth, it's an impaired stream. It eventually gets to the Piscataqua, but there's a name for the brook and-
Is that Culver down there?
Web, yes, thank you, Danny. Yeah, you are correct. It's Webb Brook, and that is impaired. And those are the things that, the next permit will say, well, what have you done? We're gonna have to get together with Wyndham and ask for their help. We're gonna have to get together with the farming and agricultural communities and ask for their, their help. We're gonna hopefully reach out to the Cumberland Water Services and Conservation Bureau at District to help us basically coordinate those type of relationships. The difficulty is that agriculture and forestry are many times exempt from a lot of this. So the ability to control some of this activity is very limited to municipalities. We can control the development sites, but some of this also occurs on other sites that we don't have control over. So it, it will be a challenge, but it has to start, and we have to do a better job. So I think this permit will be okay. The next permit that we'll be starting to work on, I believe, next year or the year after, will be more, well, what have you actually done? You know, you said you did, all the low-hanging fruit now has been picked. Now it's going to be, how are we gonna fix the impaired streams? And when you look at, like, what South Portland has to deal with around the main mall and, and other areas, it is, it is going to be very costly.
This is a public hearing. So does anyone have any questions or comments on this item? I'll give you a motion. Go ahead, Ted.
Sure. I move to amend Chapter 242, stormwater management to the Cumberland Code to add new Articles Three, erosion and sedimentation control, and Four, low-impact development as recommended by the planning board.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the council? All those in favor? Thank you. Twenty-two dash one three-six, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 250, subdivision of land, Article Three, conservation subdivision, six dot D dot seven, eight dot D, nine dot A dot one, and thirteen dot B dot one regarding conservation subdivision requirements, Sections 41 and 44 regarding stormwater management, and to add Sections 38 dot F, foundation drains, and 38 dot G, monumentation of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the planning board. I know that was a lot, and I will likely again throw it to you, Bill. But I guess one thing I will make, just make sure we're saying out loud, is that the planning board did unanimously recommend this, except for, as presented to them or proposed, except for a line under the prime, the conservation subdivision standards, under high-value conservation areas. They have rejected the recommendation around prime agricultural lands of at least five contiguous acres, whether or not in common ownership. It was proposed to have the, the last three words must be included, and that, from the planning board, has been recommended to be removed. Otherwise, as proposed, all of this, the planning board unanimously passed or recommended. So I don't know, Bob, if you were there, if there's anything you would add, or Bill, if there's anything you would add on this one, to either that discussion or the broader discussion.
Well, the understanding, I believe, was that the must had been discussed by the subcommittee and agreed upon. And it wasn't until that the board met in full session that they rejected the word must. And so there's a little bit of feeling on my part that people had agreed to something, and then they decided not to agree to it afterwards. So perhaps we can put the word must back in.
Can I, can I just ask a question? Is this a definitional term within a ordinance, trying to define what high-value conservation areas may include? Meaning, it would include prime agricultural lands of at least five contiguous acres, whether or not in common ownership? And so to me, must be included is almost redundant, if that's the case, right? Because if it's five com, if five continuous, contiguous acres, whether or not in common ownership, it's already being a defined term as this is what prime agri, high, high-value conservation area would be. Right? Is that why, do we, do we have any more background as to why this was, language was stricken?
Well, I think it came from the council. I, in all, in all honesty, the LCC was directed to look and get a report back of what we had for prime farmland in the community. We, we worked for, I don't know, six, nine months on this project, month after month, looking at maps, trying to identify them. And those lands were identified. And then Mike came back, Mike Schwint came back with a, a better definition. And we came up and developed a map that identified the exact type of land into three different categories. So I, I think it was honestly following your directive, is basically coming back with identifying these prime farmlands and trying to protect those. Because I think you even wanted us to look at, you know, what is the caloric intake of, you know, 8,600 people and how much-
I don't know that that's your question.
No, but my question is, is even with that language stricken, the way I read this, even with that language stricken, prime agricultural land would still be five contiguous, contiguous acres, whether or not in common ownership. That would still be a high-value area. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Because it's not replacing it with May. It's just, and I will say, like, it's just striking those last three words. But I guess I was also, as I was reading it, I was interpreting it the same. Like, if it had said, if we are, if their recommendation was to replace that with May, I think we'd have a bigger issue. But they're just saying, strike that whole last sentence. And it just becomes the definition of high-value conservation areas.
That's one of the seven recommendations. There are multiple others there, too, that they looked at. But prime farmland would really jump to the top. And it, and it really should be discussed in detail. And that was the directive, I think, Bob, when you were Chair, you gave to the LCC.
I'm in favor of putting the word must back in there. That was the direction that we asked the, the Lands and Conservation to come up with. It has not been tested and rejected by any developer. It's so, the, the words, the original intent is clear. I think we should leave it and put the words back in as it is.
I think just for context for the rest of the council, is that the concern that the planning board has, by putting the word must in there, that it would raise to the number-one position. And prime farmland, I think the council at the time felt should be seriously looked at and protected. So they felt their ability to maneuver is, on this parcel, is the prime farmland, should we protect that? Or is there another category of land we should look at that's one of the other seven? Should it be, you know, a forested land or, or a wetland that might have vernal pools that are significant? Those are the types of things. I think they were looking for flexibility. I don't think they were trying to be difficult. But I also thought that it was clear to me that when, when Bob was Chair, the directive that I took was, you know, protect, protect what farmland we have left, because too much of it already has been developed. So I think it was following your direction. And at this point, it's, it's your call. So.
This is a public hearing. So does anyone from the public like to comment on this item?
Madam Chairman, Mike Schwint, again, from the Lands and Conservation Commission. Initially, there were seven proposed amendments to the conservation subdivision ordinance. After considerable discussion with the planning board and the, and the commission, a subcommittee was appointed. The subcommittee met, two members from both groups. Language was agreed to all the way down to line on four items. Two items we dropped, the commission dropped their position on there. And the fifth item, which is the definition of the prime farmland, we were stumped on that one for quite a while. Like Bill said, we had to do a lot of digging in order to come up with that. The, when you look at subdivision 250 dash six, conservation subdivision standards, under the definition of high, of high conservation, high-value conservation areas, item one, existing trails that connect to existing trails on town-owned land or with existing trails on abutting land. Item two, existing healthy native forests of at least one contiguous acre. Item three, habitats of endangered, endangered or threatened species. Item four, significant wildlife habitats as defined by, by the Maine Department of Fish and Wildlife or municipal, or the municipality. Item five, significant natural features of scenic views, such as ridlines, ridge lines, peaks and rock art croppings, particularly those that can be seen from public roads. Item six, archaeological sites, historical structures, cemeteries and burial grounds. And item seven, prime agricultural lands with at least five contiguous acres, to which the amendment was attached. The reason for the five contiguous acres was, as I recall, having spent a week and a half or so on this ordinance in, in the past several years, is because we're trying to save farmland so that it could be used. We didn't want small pieces. We didn't want one-acre plots like we did with the, with the, with the town, with the forest land. We wanted pieces that were big enough so that if you're going to get involved in truck farming, if you will, or something like that, actually food production, you had to have enough land there. And because when you look at, when you look at the attachment, which shows the, 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 the prime farmland and the non-prime farmland, there's 186 pieces of, of land in Cumberland County that are designated. Seventy-five percent of them, literally seventy-five percent of them, I figured it out, are designated as non-productive land, the, the non-farm land. At least 25% are of the identified strata available for farm, as good prime farmland or important farmland, good for production on there. Again, keeping, trying to keep the bigger areas set aside so that you can use it for food production if you need it. That's why must was put on the back of that. Now, I tried to go back to the town plan, the planning board meeting to listen, to get a better understanding of the logic behind their edit to delete that. Unfortunately, the sound is gone. So I couldn't do that. So the best I could, I can recall is, they were trying to keep an option open in case something came up. Okay. If that's, if that's sufficient justification to drop it off, then leave it dropped off. If that's not, then I would ask you to add the word must back to that again and complete the sentence. Thank you.
And just for the council's education, a conservation subdivision is supposed to really come in with a blank sheet of paper. They're not supposed to have a predetermined type of subdivision like a typical subdivision. We basically said, 50% of this land needs to be conserved, and the other 50%, we're gonna give you a massive density bonus that you can develop quarter-acre lots or half-acre lots. And we went really hard at trying to protect all the land and 80% of what's left of the town to develop. So to come in with a predetermined, I'm gonna use this section and that section, that's on the developer. That's not on us. We're basically told folks to come in with some ideas, but there's flexibility built into design and conservation. You asked for that conservation subdivision in our surveys in the past that we put out to the, all the public. People wanted to see a conservation subdivision ordinance, and we did that. And we're still tweaking it as we go. So it is still a work in progress, but I think we're in a good place with this. I don't think it's going to be a massive controversial issue with developers, because we're gonna say, you know, there are gonna be times when the prime farmland is definitely what we're gonna protect. There may be other times when the planning board feels other areas can be protected or both. As Mike said, we're developing the map that's going to be part of the ordinance, that will show those specific areas. So ahead of time, before they even begin to develop their land, they're gonna know, they're gonna run into this question when they get to the planning board, because the LCC is at the table at that first meeting, when they look at what land are they gonna put in conservation. And that's gonna be one of the first things we wanna look at, too.
So I appreciate, Mike, for, for reading the ordinance, because what I heard is, the must isn't after any of the other items. And so to the planning board's point, should this be number one? Or again, if there's a plot of land that has four out of seven of these items, but that adds up to more than 50%, what we're saying with the must would be, that farmland would always be the number-one priority, and then the other things would come after that? Because it's not after the other items, the must word. So that's how, if I was on the planning board, I would also interpret it. And so I, I just-
I think it might be helpful to put it in perspective. We've only identified 900 acres. So it is a small portion of the town. And to not protect those 900 acres is not the intent of where we started with this. So I, I-
No, I, I just, I, in, in Mike reading that, I think, became very clear of what the planning board was saying, and then yours. So I'm not saying right or wrong. I just, that is very much how I would also interpret it if I was on the planning board.
And that was their, that was how they presented. They didn't like, they didn't like being hamstrung. And so, but having had a chance to digest it over from the meeting last week and think it over, I think that it's, it's prudent for us to carry through with the original intent.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but like, there, you mentioned the nine, 900 acres is the developable, developable land that is of prime agriculture definition? Is that what you're saying to me? What was the 900 acres you just referenced?
That was identified as agri-able land.
Okay.
It'll all, it'll all show up on a map that's part of the ordinance. It'll be on, online as well. I'm not sure there's 900 acres left that's not developed yet, though. I'll have to get back to you on that number.
It's not a big, it's not a big, it's not a lot of land.
Right.
Because there is farmable land that, just about all our land can grow some kind of crop.
Right.
But it's the prime farmland is, that's the, that's the piece we're really trying to protect.
Yep. I can understand the, the sentiment of the planning board, but considering the amount of work that went into this and kind of going into that beginning, thinking that there was kind of collaborative, if I'm understanding correctly, the planning board was part of that work, too, in a subcommittee? In the direction that we gave them as a council at the time? I will say, I'm not opposed to putting the must back in. If we believe that to be a priority.
I'm prepared to make a motion. Item 22 dash 136, I move to amend Chapter 250, subdivision- Item 22-136, I move to amend Chapter 250, Subdivision of Land, Article 3, Conservation Subdivision, 6. D. 7. Something 8. D. 13B.1. Reconsideration, Conservation Subdivision requirements, Section 41 and 44 regarding stormwater management, to add Sections 38F, Foundation Drains, and 38G Monumentations of the Cumberland Code as recommended by the Planning Board and to reinstate the language, whether or not in common ownership must be included, subsection 7D, 250-6, Conservation Subdivision Standards.
Second. Motion in a second? Do you have any questions or further comments from the council?
So I'm struggling with this because I'm, my mind is trying to wrap around why it's necessary to include the word must here when it seems to me when the ordinance is being read, there's an umbrella definition of what it means to be a high-value conservation area. And there are seven things listed. This is one of those seven things.
I think envision if there's 30 acres that wants to be developed, their requirement is only 50%. So if there are six of the items, it hits them, but that is 75%. Choices have to be made because we can't require them, if I'm interpreting correctly, to do all 75% of those acres. They're only required to conserve 50% of those acres. So if, so it's really about the choices in order to get that 50% of land that they have to put in conservation may not be able to do all seven. Like we could have a piece of property that has all seven of these items, so...
Right, but does this, but is this definition saying it shall include all of the following seven things? Or it could include one of the following seven things? I'm almost reading it as groceries shall include apples, oranges and bananas. And it would be weird for me to say groceries shall include apples, oranges, bananas must be included. Clearly, they're included. They're one of the...
It's saying if you only had $100 to buy everything and you wanted fruits and vegetables, but then it would be great if you could have some ice cream and other things, too, that's all on your grocery list, but you can only spend $100, what do you want to spend $100 on? We're saying spend it on fruits and vegetables first with the prime agricultural land and then you move on to the other items on your list as your budget allows. And in essence, in this case, the 50% of the land is the budget. That's the only amount we can require them to keep in subdivision or keep in conservation.
And to be clear here, the Lands and Conservation Commission was involved in the must language coming in?
Absolutely. And the Planning Board, this was a joint effort.
And there was always disagreement on the must, but the reasoning came back to prime farmland has to be a priority, so.
Part of the difficulty is not having the whole ordinance in front of us. And I found this true last week at the Planning Board meeting. I only had a snippet of copy to refer to as a member of the public while the Planning Board debated this. And had I had the whole ordinance in front of me, my comments to them may have been different. And again, this evening, we only have a small snippet here. We don't have the whole ordinance to see how it plays out, but...
So just one more follow-up question. This is basically saying that prime agricultural lands of at least five contiguous acres, whether or not in common ownership, must be part of the analysis in determining whether particular parcels of land are quote-unquote "high-value conservation areas"?
No, it's saying if you had that 30 acres and it had prime agricultural land, no matter what other things, the first thing you're going to say, developer, you have to put into conservation, has to be the prime agricultural land. So if that 30 acres, if you have five continuous, that just automatically goes towards that 50%. And then the other items on that list, one through six, would then kind of come into play. But the first thing you say is, does this piece of property have prime agricultural land? If it does, then we know that's going to conservation.
Right, and again, I think not having the full statute in front of me right now confuses me because I think it could be reorganized in a different way. May's and musts and shells instead of a colon and then seven things, but...
Ron, go ahead.
Bill, can you give us an example of prime agricultural land in town?
Yeah, Pine Ridge Acres.
Okay, and that's what I'm, that's what's in the back of my mind. I mean, continuous five-acre piece of property, right? I mean, obviously, there's way more than...
Over 100, 200 acres.
Right, right. I mean, but give me another smaller piece, just so...
Millie Watson's on Turkey Lane.
That's more than five acres, by a long ways. What I'm trying to picture, I guess, in my mind is a smaller piece of land.
Probably down in the valley, in Pleasant Valley area. There are some farms down there as well. And we looked, and we looked at this hard because we took just the open field areas.
Glad you brought that up because that is what stuck in the back of my...
Not the forest, because there's a lot of forest in there.
Valley road is what sticks in the back of my head. It's kind of undeveloped land. It's old farmland, been farmed since I was a kid. And that's exactly what I'm picturing in my mind, so that's what I'm...
So if you've got a conservation subdivision there, Ron, that basically took up all the farming land and wanted to put roads and subdivisions in it and left you some of the junk land outside of that, you'd say, sorry, that doesn't work for us. Our criteria is that has to come first. And that was the direction we got from, and that's the year we spent looking at every single parcel.
To me, that's kind of the untouched area of Cumberland.
Well, this is what kills me about...
Who's the lady that just passed away on Harris Road there, when they tore the house down?
Marion Day.
That would be a good...
That's not prime farmland. That's very scantic soil that's really difficult to build on. It's very poor quality. But it has agricultural value as a field. So when we looked at every open field, we looked at it, okay, what is the soil type? Where is the water table? What are the, you know, what's around it? I mean, the drainage capabilities of that soil that are there. There are lots of things that go into prime farmland. So that's why we felt a map would be best and that map would show the size of those parcels, whether they were connected or not, it didn't matter, but that's what we're going to look at first.
I think that would have been a lot easier if we'd had the map in front of us tonight to look at it. I mean...
And I'll bring that back to you because that's still in the...
And I know where Mark's coming from, too. I mean, but that Valley Road, to me, is a perfect example, so I mean...
So you'll get a map that basically has the three categories, prime, and then it's then farmable land and then basically neither prime nor farmable land. So all of those will be presented and a developer can look at that and say, okay, I know I've got to deal with this on this parcel. Yeah, it'll be similar to this, but it's, this is still a work in progress. We're trying to finalize that map with our GIS consultant and that map will go in hopefully with those three, prime farmland, not prime farmland, and farmland of statewide importance. We're looking at the prime farmland in particular. And that's where we have focused our attention to in this whole process. And thank you, Mike, appreciate that. It'll be very similar to that. A developer will look at it, will have the ability to zoom in on the actual parcel right online. And that's what confusion will be gone from this part of it. But I really believe that we were following that directive from where the council said, let's move forward and see what we can do.
I will just say, if the LCC and the Planning Board and everyone else seems to be on board with, including the must, I'm fine with it. My only issue is just, I feel like the entire Section D should be rephrased at some point to say something to the effect of, "High-value conservation areas include the following with subsection 7, prime agricultural lands of at least five contiguous acres taking precedence over the other." Right? And then have that colon and then list out the other things. Just seems awkward to me to have it at the very end and add must be included when all of the others were also included. I think we should order prioritize that out a little bit in terms of language, but maybe that's for another night.
I think that is a, I concur that if we were to do this, just adding those three words, potentially causes more confusion than actually clarity. But if the intent is to get this on paper as potentially more development is happening, then let's, I think, move forward as the motion presented and see where the chips fall. But I will say to kind of take that back for our ordinance committee with you and Shirley and Mr. Eads to probably look at that kind of section.
Happy to do that.
Mark, can you give you a first draft?
Yeah. So I do have a motion in a second. All those in favor? Thank you. 22... 137, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 229, Site Plan Review, Sections 2, 10.C.1, 10.C.2B and C, and Appendix C of the Cumberland Code related to stormwater management amendments as recommended by the Planning Board. And this, I will say, is related to all of the two previous, kind of just working through now with the Site Plan Review to then reflect everything we've just put into ordinance. Any questions or comments from the council?
I see the word must there. That jumped right out at you.
These are strong words.
It is a public...
Oh, I see it twice.
It is a public hearing. Do I have any, anyone from the public that would like to comment? I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'll give you your motion. I move to amend Chapter 229, Site Plan Review, Section 2, 10C.1, 10C.2, B and C, and Appendix C of the Cumberland Code related to stormwater management amendments as recommended by the Planning Board.
Second.
Any comments or questions from the council? All those in favor? Thank you. 22-138, to hold a public hearing to consider and act on amendments to Chapter 30, Boards and Commissions, to add Section 4, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board as recommended by the Ordinance Committee. I will say I would invite tabling of this item. We are missing Counselor Shirley Story King, who is the council representative on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. So I would prefer having her here to kind of talk us through their process and kind of where they've landed. There is also no time sensitivity to this item.
Move to table. Second.
Thank you. All those in favor to table? Thank you. 22-139, to set a public hearing date of November 14th, to consider and act on authorizing the town manager to execute closing documents for the purchase of the Valhalla Banquet Center from Maine State Golf Association, Inc. for a purchase price of $325,000 to be paid from the building reserve fund. I will just note again, this is just to set the public hearing date of November 14th. We are not taking action on the actual authorization to purchase.
Second.
I have a motion in a second? All those in favor? Thank you. That concludes legislation and policy. Moving to new business? So this is just setting the public hearing date for November 14th? So it's not executing any, taking any action? If you would like to provide comment, I'm happy to provide the opportunity.
Madam Chair, I assume you're getting as tired of being up here as I am. Nonetheless, today I received an email from the Sustainability Subcommittee expressing concerns about this proposed transaction. Their concerns were expressed in three different areas. The first one is the impact the expenditures could have on the goal of conserving 30% of the town lands by 2030 called for in the Climate Action Plan approved by the Town Council. The second one is to meet 30% of the town. If we wish to keep the goal of 30% before everything takes place, there has to be some additional changes made. The second concern is with the potentially high cost of retrofitting the banquet center to a zero-carbon standard for new buildings called for in the Climate Action Plan, Phase 1, which was also approved by the Town Council. The third concern is the extent to which sludge spreading at Valhalla may require remediation. And that back a few years ago, S.D. Warren received the license to spread bioash and sludge on 25 acres of fairways and greens at Valhalla in 1984 and that there was also winter stockpiling of this stuff in the area. Those are the three, in a nutshell, the points of concern that the sustainability had for this particular transaction. So I'll try and answer any questions if there are any. And I believe there's some people would also like to make further comments on this. Thank you.
I will say, so that I think so recognized and I would expect and hope that we'll have a formal kind of comment and recommendation from the LCC for the 14th meeting.
If it gets referred to us, you will.
Yep, and so I know our two counselors would be happy to kind of relay as well, but like so recognized, I've made note to kind of formally submit if we haven't received something, but I know we have some documentation.
So, Madam Chair, can I recommend that we include this as part of the agenda for the early November for LCC? Correct? So we can discuss this larger, as part of the larger Town Council hearing?
Our next meeting is November 2nd.
Yep, so should, timing should work well. Yep, go ahead.
So I'm speaking, I'm Lou Gallaudet. I'm speaking as a member of the Ad Hoc Committee on Affordable Housing. There really are several entities that are interested in this event or this potential purchase. Our group is interested in the money because what we're working on is what can we do to create affordable housing and find land on which to put the affordable housing. So town money for building is something that we're very interested in and would not, and would like to be part of that conversation. And the other piece of it is the space. Is there any way that, and perhaps not, but we would like to be in on that conversation, is there anything that we can do with that space as far as affordable housing is concerned? So I think there's actually several entities that would like a piece of this pie. And the third person, the third group, I guess, is not here tonight, right? The Cumberland Chabig Land Trust also. So we're all greedy and would not like to be forgotten.
We hope you all come on the 14th because I think we'll need a bigger discussion on this.
Thank you. So moving to new business, Mr. Cobb?
I was not here for our last meeting, so therefore I wasn't able to donate my $20 for the 4H Food Pantry. So here's $40 for the last meeting and 20 for last and 20 for tonight. I was able to attend the 4H auction about a month ago. The town was able to purchase three pigs and ones, do you? Very interesting. Prices were extremely high this year. The kids did extremely well. I mean, and it was good to see that the kids are actually very good salesmen. They came around to all of us before the auction and promoted their animals and told us what they did and how they raised them, what they fed them and everything. And they were very appreciative of us all being there. Next thing, Saturday is the beginning of firearms hunting season. So if you're out walking, please wear orange. And if you have your pets with you, try to put some orange on those as well. Next question's for the manager. When is the last day of absentee voting?
Good question. The Thursday before the election, I believe. So I don't have a calendar for...
These old...
The third, okay. All right, that's just for the public to know. And that is all I have.
Thank you.
I wanted to give one shout-out to the amazing job that the folks at Pine Ridge Acres have done with this Fall Festival. It is spectacular. And if people haven't gotten out there with their kids or their grandkids or just gone out, it's amazing. I had a really nice time in the tractor ride. I think I was the only adult in it, but it was still wildly fun. So just a pleasure, really, kind of seeing all of that come together. And regarding the, the upcoming referendum and being on the communication committee, thank you, Mr. Stiles, for kind of the very candid feedback. You know, we will do everything that we can to streamline any final communication as we come up to the referendum. I would also just like to really put out there, people in the community, to come ask us questions. The, the FAQs have been updated, the most recent meeting that has timestamps, which are very, very clear, down to kind of, this person has a question about, you know, what the operating costs are going to look like. We've, we've done our best to be as transparent as we can be. I know that there are some growing pains there. But I would also just like to give a shout out to Kim Vine, who is putting her blood, sweat, and tears into kind of communicating as best she can. She's doing everything to kind of be available to the community, and, you know, again, while it's, it's not perfect, I think that the effort that's been put forth by a lot of folks who are really just kind of working to make a really transparent process. So, yeah, that's it for me.
And Tig, is most of this information, so for folks that maybe aren't, I was like, used to like, going to the school district website, is it just msad51.org?
Yep. So you can link directly to the new primary school website from there. I think I mentioned earlier, there will be a mailer going out as well. I know that we had discussed originally, including a calculator on there, so individual homeowners can put in their assessed value and then understand what that tax burden is going to look like. I haven't seen the final on that. I'm not sure if that's actually on the flyer, but I can inquire. And if not, you know, I think we could probably work with Whitney to make sure that that's included in the cryer, because I believe the cryer, there's also a paper copy, right, that gets mailed out? So we can kind of close the loop on that in the, in the coming weeks before we hit the referendum date.
I will also throw out that the chair of the school board is a Cumberland resident, Mr. Record, and I, you, you are represented on your school board. We all vote for them, even though they're for the school, and they are the folks that hopefully are the subject matter experts on this. So I would encourage folks, if you have questions, if you are hearing something or seeing something that you want to confirm, and probably should before you're voting on such a really important topic, that I encourage you to reach out to the folks that actually are in the details every day and are not surmising, or assuming, or heard it from a friend of a friend. I just encourage you to reach out to the folks that are working on this, know it in depth of the last years that they have been working on this type of project. It's definitely, while it feels like it's all happened really fast, it's been a multi-year project that they have been endeavoring on. Go ahead, Ron.
Just one comment from Mr. Stiles, too. About a month ago, we had a joint meeting, the council, the North Yama Select Board, and the school board, right here in the, in the chambers. And I don't remember if the public was invited to that or not. I believe it.
Always invited.
Yep, it was noticed.
Not very well attended by the public. I mean, and a lot of this was laid out there then, Bill, and I just assumed that it was out there. But, you know, I guess I went wrong, so.
Thank you. Are you good?
I'm good. Thanks.
I'm all set.
All right. I'll, I'll shoot to you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, we have a housing task force meeting at 6:00 PM tomorrow night here, I believe, in the chambers again, so we will see many of the folks there.
Hopefully, you can talk about Valhalla, too.
I'm sure we will discuss it. Just another point, I just wanted to give folks an update on the MMA's Legislative Policy Committee that I sit on. We met last month. We have another meeting on the 10th of November, I believe, up in Augusta. But the goal of the last meeting, obviously, was to identify a huge swath of issues that might potentially be on the legislative agenda, what folks want to push forward. We have now whittled those down. I don't know what the final number is, but I did complete a, an online email kind of pulse, do you support this? Do you support that? So I'm guessing the next step is we're going to get an email saying, these are what the, the top 10 issues are. That does not preclude us from raising another issue with the LPC if we feel like it's important. You know, I'm thinking about our discussion on the stormwater mandates there. I know that was something that's been discussed at some of these meetings. How do you get funding for those types of things, if this is being mandated down on the municipality? So I'll keep folks updated once I know what those, those final items are. So that's it for me.
Thank you. As one new business item, kind of coming out of the workshop the council had after our last meeting regarding priorities and kind of active work projects, I would say really productive discussion. Good news, not much shifting. I think if I can summarize, but the one item with our town manager's impending retirement that I will ask of you is to reach out to our town attorney and kind of schedule time with us, I think, probably realistically after the new year, but not too soon, too far after that, to really just, we have many council members that this is our first time going through this, and just to start the education of what this process looks like, legally, kind of where we go through. So that is my ask of you, sir.
Brenda, Brenda and I spoke with the town attorney today, and she will be at either your first or your second meeting in January, an executive session between six and seven. I will excuse myself from that, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Can I add one other thing? We, we have a really, a crisis going on right now all through Southern Maine, and that has to do with our, our EMS personnel, our paramedics and our EMTs. That crisis now has come even closer to home, because we have been told by Maine EMS that our, our paramedic, one paramedic who is unvaccinated, but has tested every single shift he worked, is no longer allowed to administer patient care. And that ruling came through Maine EMS. That ruling is done by an authority, Maine EMS, who has rulemaking authority, meaning it's not done by your state legislature. It's basically passed by that organization and essentially approved by the governor. It's the Secretary of State and the Attorney General have a role in it, but it's more of a procedural role than really any kind of veto power. That's part one. Part two will be November 1st of next year, 2023, will mandate that all EMS personnel, paramedics and EMTs who do this as their regular job, will be mandated to also have flu shots. And that will, most likely, will lose more personnel when that comes through. Right now, there is a shortage of openings in Cumberland County, just Cumberland County, of twenty-seven paramedics between all the departments in Cumberland County. This is not getting easier, and we've really got to find a better solution. And, Mark, I know the LPC doesn't have power over Maine EMS, but, man, somebody has to. Somebody has got to help us, because we're not getting any help. And we will begin to petition the governor during the rulemaking process. All the EMS providers talked about, you know, the need and ability to, we make special accommodations for every employee that has a need or a help, but we can't help here when we're at a critical event. We were, we will be forced to be looking at how we staff our ambulances. We're doing the best we can right now. We have, we have many EMTs and paramedics that are vaccinated, but it still leaves some large holes in scheduling, and that's not going to get any easier next year when flu shots are mandated. So we need help. We need help, and anybody you can talk to, anybody you can help, talk to related to this, we've got to get it out there, and we've got to get people at least having a conversation of, how do we get to a better place? Because until we can figure out a way to backfill all these vacancies across public safety, and in the police department, the same thing, we're, we're having a real hard time filling vacancies there, and every department is, and the jails are, and everybody now is in a, a very difficult, difficult situation. So we're just looking for some help, especially on providing emergency medical services by people that are well-trained, well-qualified, and are taking every precaution to keep our patients safe as well as our staff safe. So I wanted the council to know that, because we had a very, very difficult meeting this morning with our, our union reps. They are part of the Teamsters Union. We've asked for their help in any way. They can present, they are a big union. And we also need to just keep talking about it, because this isn't going to get fixed by itself. And we really need to recruit more people into this field. That's regardless of what happens with this law. There's a shortage anyway, and this just adds on top of it. So wanted to let the council know. We're, we're on top of it for now, but many of our staff are working multiple, multiple forced shifts, because we just don't have the bodies. And there aren't a lot of per diems out there available to do this work anymore. They're all getting gobbled up by other agencies, and I, I don't see a very positive end in sight in the near future. I think this is going to take some time, and it's going to take, honestly, it's going to take the governor to intervene and really help us. Even if it's a stay, if you will, for trying to figure it out for 24 months, and trying to work on a program where we can get more paramedics in through training at SMCC and other places, because it does take a while to become a paramedic. It doesn't happen by, it's not like a driver's license. You just, it doesn't happen to everybody. So we've, we've got to work at trying to fix this.
I lied. I realized I said I had one item. I meant one of two. So thank you, Bill, on that. But the other item I had was, I had the pleasure this weekend of joining the CCLT's annual meeting at the New Longwoods Preserve, so, which is a beautiful spot. And it was such a beautiful day, and the icing on the cake was that I was able to be there and listen to all of the amazingly kind words, but just recognition of what our town manager has done and supported in partnership with the CCLT in conserving just huge plots of land that took years to do, between rhines and knights and, and others. And so he, I guess I will, I will share with the public, for those that don't know, and recognize the council, that our town manager received from CCLT the Bates Conservation Award in recognition of just his 20-plus years of being just such a steward and partner for them. So thank you. Very proud to have been there and witnessed that. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
That is all I had. Go ahead.
Bill, with the EMTs, when does this go into effect?
Well, we dragged our feet a little bit. It's, it went into effect in July. So we got a notice that we want, they wanted all unvaccinated EMTs and paramedics and their social security numbers, and falsifying this report was a Class D felony. They had to throw that in. And then the other, the vaccination is November 1st of 2023. And that, I mean, the flu shots are November 1st of 2023. The COVID vaccines are, are effect immediately, and actually took place, became law sometime in July. I asked Alyssa to basically call and see if there was anything we could do as a community, the testing, and that we were paying for the testing, and we were trying to do all our things. They basically said to her on the first phone call that they were waiting for the Attorney General to make it official law, and then, then it would, then it would become in effect. So I asked Alyssa, I said, well, until the Attorney General rules, then I'm all set, and I'm going to keep working with this paramedic. And she said, yeah, that would make sense. Literally, three hours later, they called all apologetic and said, oh, I apologize. I'm really sorry. We gave you the wrong information. The rule had passed in July. So even internally at Maine EMS, they don't know what the law is, and this is what's frustrating. So, you know, how, how are we expected to comply when we can't even get a straight answer? So for me, I'm just, just very frustrated.
Who would think? A common sense. I mean, when everybody's a shortage of these, and if somebody's being tested, to me, it's just a, I don't know.
I, I'm just asking for help. Just give us, give us, give us some time to figure this out, so we can work together at, you know, getting something. And if there's a way to keep it safe, let's keep it safe. I mean, I'll put a Plexiglas shield. I'll do whatever I have to do, but.
Get a shot.
Losing, losing people with this skill is, is.
Yeah, he's retired.
I just want you to know, I have a daughter and granddaughters working in the hospital. My daughter got her first flu shot ever this year so she could keep her job. And because of that, they've, they've got all kinds of shot balls. And they're putting you in double and triple duty, twelve-hour shifts back to back. It's not getting any better.
I think we're feeling it everywhere. Thank you. I will take a motion for a term. All those in favor? Thank you.
Get a friggin' shot. I have so many notes in there, Fran.
Do you want your notes?
No, no. Just to be clear, I had nothing against including farmland as a priority. I just didn't like the way it was, the language of it. I just thought it was awkward.